All right, we'll get the show on the road here. And got a full house tonight, so before we kind of kick it off here, given the number of people that we have here, I was going to have our city deputy fire marshal Jamie Joseph come up to podium and talk about some safety information.
Please use the microphone if you can.
Is that better?
There you go.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? All right. Exit here at the front, exit at the back. If you have any questions or you need anything during the meeting, please let us know. We have police and fire in the back corners. If you need to sit down, if you're standing along the sides, we do have some overflow space in the room adjacent to this room. There's a live feed in there where you can see the meeting, and then if you want to speak, you will still be allowed to speak. We'll call your name, we'll make sure you get over from the other room, okay? Any questions? Any questions for me? Okay.
All right, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the November 13th meeting minutes. Questions, comments, motions.
We've got a second. Next up is the city council actions update.
At their December meeting, the Meben City Council approved the rezoning and special use requests related to the water resource recovery facility off of Cregador Street, and additionally approved the mandatory stormwater amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. We did have as an agenda item, the adoption of the rules of procedure that you all had considered at your November meeting. One council member had some questions about items that he desired for staff to research, particularly how to incorporate some duties and responsibilities of the planning board and your role to review items as it relates to our ordinances and long-range plans and such. So staff will be doing that research and bringing it back to council. Are there any questions?
Well, we see that again before it goes back to council.
If you desire to see it, I can discuss with staff and council about that as well.
Okay.
All right. I'm going to provide a quick overview, just given the crowd we have this evening, about how our meeting typically goes for rezoning and special use requests, and I'm also going to turn to the crowd. All right, so since we have so many people here, we just want to give you an overview of when you can expect to speak. In Meben, we do first a presentation by staff of the request, then a presentation by the applicant. The planning board may ask questions of staff and the applicant during or after those presentations, and then at that time, we would open it up for public comment. We've asked for you to sign in on the sheet in the back, so if you haven't, please take action to do that, and we'll just go in the order as people have signed up. We'll give more instruction, our chair will, as we get to that period of time.
Next up is the request to rezone the plus or minus 32 acres with preliminary address of 1425 Trallingwood-Hoffelds Road on frontage of I-4085 from LMCD to HMCD to allow contingent on the approval of special use permit, a travel plaza by CSMS Management LLC.
Members of the planning board, you do have two agenda items, as we did last month, with the rezoning and special use requests that are related to the same property. Staff and the applicant will be presenting both requests at the same time, just for the sake of clarity and to avoid confusion. So I will go ahead and present those requests. After the presentation, discussion, hearing from the public, you will have to make two separate motions on the different items. Before you is a request to conditionally rezone and to also receive a special use permit for property that totals just over 32 acres at the intersection of Interstate 4085 and Trallingwood-Hoffelds Road. The requests are being made by CSMS Management LLC and are for proposed Buc-Ee's. Currently, the site is zoned light manufacturing conditional district, and the request is to rezone the property to heavy manufacturing conditional district in order to allow for a travel plaza by special use permit. The property is located in the North Carolina Commerce Park, and as such, is primarily surrounded to the west by industrial zoning. There is also industrial zoning across the interstate. Across Trallingwood-Hoffelds Road is a mix of zoning, including general business district, light manufacturing, residential, and mobile home park. The property, as I mentioned, is within an industrial park and is located in Alamance County. The property was annexed last year and is in our city limits. Currently, the property is vacant. It historically has been used as a farm, and last December, the Meben City Council approved a light manufacturing development that included the site, and on this particular piece of property would have been a 279,000 square foot warehouse. Surrounding uses include industrial users in the Commerce Park. Those users range from UPS to Revere Copper to Walmart Distribution. There's a Love's Travel Stop across the interstate and a Pilot's Travel Center across Trallingwood-Hoffelds Road. Additionally, there are some residential and vacant properties immediately surrounding the area across Trallingwood-Hoffelds Road and Senator Ralph Scott Parkway and the Hoffelds Presbyterian Churches nearby. The site is located in an industrial growth strategy area as identified by our comprehensive land development plan known as Meben by Design. It includes stream and floodplain and wetlands. Those areas are shown in the shaded green that you can kind of see the outline of through this map as conservation areas due to the stream buffer. With the rezoning requests and also the special use requests, there is a site plan which has been reviewed by the Technical Review Committee five times. The special use permit is requested to allow for a travel plaza that would include an approximately 74,000 square foot building, 120 fueling positions, and approximately 650 parking spaces, which would be for standard ADA electric vehicle and bus RV. The site-specific plan, if the special use permit is approved, would carry with the rezoning district, and the rezoning district would only be for that one use, the travel The site plan shows two driveways on Trallingwood-Hoffelds Road, one of which is ride-in only, and that is the one closest to the interchange. The other is a full movement driveway with a proposed traffic signal. The third driveway is located on Senator Ralph Scott Parkway and is achieved via an access easement with that property owner. The site plan also shows a 10-foot multi-use path which extends from the driveway on Senator Ralph Scott Parkway across the interstate bridge to the existing sidewalk at Love's. There is a bicycle plaza accompanying the site plan, which is to be consistent with our Unified Development Ordinance requiring bicycle parking along with ADA parking. With the conditional nature of these requests, the applicant is requesting some deviations from what is typically required of our development ordinance as it relates to signage. In particular, the freestanding sign that is being proposed is at a maximum height of 90 feet and a maximum area of 400 square feet. By our ordinance, the applicant would be allowed two signs within 400 feet of the interstate, given that they have frontage on Trallingwood-Hoffelds Road and I-40. Those signs would have to be a maximum of 60 feet in height and 300 square feet in area. The applicant is also proposing wall signs that exceed our 200 square foot maximum. However, they do meet our standard requirement of one square foot per every linear foot of wall length. We just set a maximum in our ordinance as well. A traffic impact analysis was conducted for this project. It has been reviewed by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, the city of Meben staff, and also our contracted consultant, VHB. In addition to the original analysis, there was an addendum and a secondary memo, and we have looked at this for many months. There are a number of roadway improvements that are being proposed and required by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and those include widening of Trallingwood-Hoffelds Road, turn lane on Senator Ralph Scott Parkway, widening of the interchange ramps, and of course, the bridge across the interstate. Unless there are questions for me at this time, I will turn it over to the applicant for presentation.
Nice to see all of you again. My name is Amanda Hodiern, address at 804 Green Valley Road in Greensboro. I'm here tonight as the attorney on behalf of the property owner and applicant, CSMS Management LLC. That is, of course, an entity controlled by Buc-Ee's. So the Buc-Ee's is excited to be a property owner here in Meben, and we're excited to be before you this evening to discuss with you these plans that we've been working on for a long time. I want to go ahead and introduce the team I have with me tonight. We have a lot of folks here to help answer any questions and give you as much clarity as possible, and you're going to hear from most of them tonight. So I'll go ahead and do a quick roll call. We have Mr. Stan Beard from Buc-Ee's. Stan, if you'll wave. He is officially in charge of this process. As they expand and open new stores in various locations, he is the person who heads that project up for the corporation. So he specializes in the site selection, the project management of the team, this entitlement process with each jurisdiction, and ensuring that these sites work as well as possible and can be approvable and do what they want to do and continue the success of the organization. We also have with us our civil engineering and design team from Kimbley Horn. So we have Mr. Earl Luellen, who's our traffic consultant. We have Austin Watts, who is our civil engineering, and Seth Ward, also with civil engineering. You'll hear from Austin when we get into some site planning items. We have with us Mr. Marcus Orr from McNaryan Associates, who helped us with our real estate appraisals. And we also have with us our internal, this is an important role because it's a little bit different. Buc-Ee's also has an internal civil engineer that works on all these sites, and that's because it's such a special and different type of project that it works best to have outside consultants from the local area, but also an in-house engineer who knows what it takes to make a Buc-Ee's work, and those two disciplines work together to ensure we get it right. So we have Mr. Scott Radcliffe from Buc-Ee's Corporate, who's our internal in-house design engineer, who you'll also hear from tonight. Excuse me. I want to say thank you to the Meben staff. We've worked long and hard on this. I think Ms. OMB put it many months, and I think that's being generous, but we've worked hard, and they worked with us every step of the way. You heard, this has been through TRC five times, so we've appreciated that process. It's been very collaborative and I think productive, and we're pleased that we come before you tonight with recommendations of approval and with a plan that we feel is very solid. It's no secret that Buc-Ee's wants to be here in this area. We've all known that for a while, and I think that I can say with full confidence that Buc-Ee's is very excited and pleased to have found this location. It feels like a good fit. It feels like Meben has the energy and the certain something, that je ne sais quoi, that Buc-Ee's likes to be a part of, and it's something that is exciting for them to get to be a part of a community that's thriving and growing. It's such a successful bridge, if you will, between the triad and the triangle, and that's just exactly the kind of spot, for a lot of reasons that we'll talk about, that Buc-Ee's would love to be a part of. So with that, if we could go to my presentation, please. Thank you. So Ms. OMB touched on this a little bit, but I want to start by really examining the nature of this request. And of course, in that, we have two ultimate motions before you this evening. The first is a rezoning request. We're asking to go from LM conditional to HM conditional, and I want to focus on that for a moment. With conditional zoning here in Meben, of course, it is site plan specific. So we're going to look at the site plan that you have before you and that you just saw in the staff presentation a lot tonight, and that's important because that is the only thing on the table, and that is the only thing, if approved, that can happen. So that offers very high predictability and a firm commitment to the citizens, to the community, to you all as city officials of what's going to happen, and that it will happen the way that we say it will and the way that staff has approved. So if there were any substantive changes that came along throughout the process, we'd have to come back before you for you to have input on that. So the site-specific plan is a very important aspect of your conditional use zoning here in Meben. Also want to talk about the use. We are asking for the HM district to get that one specific use that's allowed there of the travel center or travel plaza, and I want to put a big asterisk on that use because that typically means, and in Meben, it does mean a truck stop type of use, where you would have tractor trailers and semi-trucks that have overnight parking. There's showers in the facility, and it's really meant to be an asset and a convenience for overnight travelers that include truckers. Buc-Ee's does not allow that. So while travel center, travel plaza was the best fit for us in your permitted use table, you of course don't have a Buc-Ee's line item. We are not a traditional travel plaza. So we are narrowed down to that one specific use, and then that one use is cut in half, I would submit to you, because we do not allow that use. The only tractor trailers that come on a Buc-Ee's property are to deliver the fuel. We do have RV and bus parking, because of course, this is about road trips and travel, but it's not about trucking. There's no showers, there's no truck parking. There's 86 uses in the heavy manufacturing district, and again, we're only talking about one, and we're only talking about it in the form and fashion that's right there in front of you on those big plants. So the point of all that that I'm emphasizing is that this is a very narrowly tailored, very specific request that narrows down a wide universe to a small one, and the scope of what we're requesting is this and only this. All aspects of this proposal, the other great thing about your site-specific process is that all these items you see and that you're going to hear about have been vetted by your technical review committee. So all your experts, all the disciplines that come together, your engineering group, your planning staff, the fire team, the police office, the NC DOT, everybody comes together and reviews these plans every time, all five times. So that means that we know that this will work, we know that it meets the ordinance, and we know that it's the best version of the ways to do that. Also, it's fully on public record for full transparency, so again, you get that predictability and that commitment. This, of course, is that proposed site plan. Just important to kind of remember, this is what it's all about. This is the rendered version, if you will, of the black and white engineered drawings that you see before you. This is just a little less busy and a little easier to see things, but of course, we do have the site plans available if we need to look at those. But you can see here, the experts are going to talk about this in a lot more detail, but you see here how the site orients and fits right at that southwest quadrant of the I-4085 interchange with Trallingwood-Hoffelds. You see how it does, of course, preserve the stream corridors and the floodplain as the important environmental sensitive features on the site. You see the frontages and the access ways that you'll hear more about, and of course, you see the onsite stormwater management. So for a zoning analysis, we're going to talk about zoning first, and then we'll go into details for the special use permit. But as you know, with the zoning analysis, you're really traditionally looking at two prongs. Is it harmonious and reasonably compatible with the existing land use? Is it reasonable? And then is it consistent with your comprehensive plan guidance? So let's first talk about that existing land use pattern. The red star is, of course, the project site. The big yellow roadway that you see is going across the screen is the 8540 corridor, and then that's Trallingwood-Hoffelds coming in at an angle, and then Highway 119 making the other side of the V, if you will. So really, as you know, this is about this site's location at the interstate interchange. A project like this, Buc-Ee's does not want to be and cannot be removed from the interchange. It just doesn't work. So this site location is ideal in that it's on the 8540 corridor, which we all know, you all know from sitting here and from living in Meben, what a thriving and busy travel corridor that is, how busy it is, how used it is, not just by folks in Meben and Alamance County, but across the state. So it's a busy corridor. It's exactly the place where Buc-Ee's wants to be, because Buc-Ee's is all about serving and capturing the folks that are already traveling. So this So, so this is it. And we're right on that interchange so that we can do that in the most efficient and effective way possible without impeding or impacting any more of the roadways than, than, than needs to be, and without creating additional travel time or inefficiencies for the folks who want to get in, go to Buc-E's and get back on the road. So that's why we're here. This is also an ideal site in that we look for a location where we're not going outside of what is already happening on the ground in, in that location. So we're not introducing something new and different within reason to, to what we already see here. So of course, we have two big Travel Center plazas here at this interchange already. We've got the Loves Travel Center just across the interstate to the north of us, and then we have the Pilot Travel Center across Trallingwood-Hofffields Road, right across the street. So, so this is a site that has that history of serving this need. It's also within the North Carolina Commerce Park. So this is a site that Meben, along with Alamance County and the City of Graham, has made a commitment to and invested heavily in being the types of uses we're going to talk about. An employment center, a destination for certain types of users who serve those economic development goals and needs of a community. And Buc-E's fits right into that. Looking at the zoning context, which of course is the regulatory landscape that underpins your land use pattern, this, this is all very consistent and, and, and explains why you see what's happening on the ground. So all the purple, of course, is your heavy and light manufacturing. So most of the Commerce Park is zoned light manufacturing, including this site currently per the Crowe Holdings case from last year, as you heard from staff. This site today is not, is not the rural farmland that you see. It's actually a two-hundred-and-seventy-nine square foot warehouse with forty-nine truck docks and seventy-one tractor trailer spaces. So that's, that's what it is, ready to go. Buc-E's came into the picture, approached, approached Crowe Holdings, were able to purchase this site, and we believe offer a request that fits into that fabric while also being synergistic to the Commerce Park and offering perhaps an alternative use that fits well within it and, and works compatibly with it. You also see a lot of bright red on the screen. That's your B-two zoning. So that's your big, your big commercial zoning here in Meben. So this, this, this is a site, yes, there is some residential in the area. That's the orange that you see and the beige. But primarily, this is, this patchwork of, of red and purple that you see here represents a commitment to non-residential zoning here, and that's by design. It's because the Commerce Park is being held and reserved for other types of uses to be compatible with those heavy, heavier uses. So the other prong of the analysis that I mentioned a moment ago is your comprehensive plan guidance. The state legislation asks you to look at your consistency with these adopted documents from the City of Meben. So that's what we've done, and that's what we do when we look for a site. These documents are very important to developers and applicants that come before a city because we want to be in keeping with your goals and objectives and your growth plans. We want to do something that fits your vision for your community. So we're excited that we believe this does, and we're excited that staff's analysis reflects an agreement with that, with that assertion, and, and that we have been found to be consistent. Meben by Design is, of course, is your comprehensive land development plan. It designates future land use areas. This one is the purple here, Roman numeral four. It's G-one industrial. That, if you look within the text of Meben by Design, tells us that that area is about industrial growth because it has the greatest access to the interstate and has the greatest opportunity for access to infrastructure. So you've already, Meben has already invested in utilities in these areas, which means it's viable and ready to go for industrial and economic development type of uses. It's part of the North Carolina Commerce Park, as we've talked about. It's about being destination-oriented, being an employment center, and supporting the industrial uses in this location. That's what your Meben by Design land use plan tells us that the city's vision is for this property. Your comprehensive transportation plan is also one of your long-range planning documents. And then we're excited again to be in keeping with this, specifically with roadway project number three. That is the Trallingwood-Hofffields Road widening. You can see the little map in the upper left-hand corner, the purple and black designated roadway. That's Trallingwood-Hofffields. I apologize, my red star got moved as I was moving pictures around. But the purple and black is, is the roadway. And if you look down on the legend of roadway facilities, it tells us that that's an unfunded needed improvement. So that's what this road has been identified as, and you see the larger inset with the little diagram showing that, that whole red area from Gibson Road to the north, all the way down to Highway one nineteen to the south, and of, of course, across the overchange, the bridge, all needs to be widened. And that was unfunded. This project is, is going to accomplish that. So this is a great example of private development having the opportunity to further and facilitate the goals and objectives of, of the plans already in place. Now, of course, this project won't go all the way up to Gibson Road, but it will take care of a lot of this red area that you see, and we'll look at that in detail when we get to those slides. Again, this is our site plan that we're going to be talking about. And I just wanted to put that up here on the screen to remember again the way that this all situates. We've been talking plans and land use patterns, so I wanted to just sort of reaffirm how this is all going to look. And before we go into our special use permit section, because Buc-E's is such a singular uniquity of a use and a concept, I wanted to take a few minutes and let Stan introduce you to that idea. For anyone who hasn't been there or had the chance to experience it, it really is something in and of itself, and I think it makes sense and warrants a little bit of an explanation so that you have the full, full gamut of information as you apply it to your analysis. So I'm going to ask Stan to come up now and talk to us about Buc-E's as a concept.
Hey, I'm Stan Beard. Thanks for having me. I'm Director of Development and Real Estate for Buc-E's. Three twenty-seven FM two thousand and four, Lake Jackson, Texas. Do I push, is this the, do I do this? The big white one. So, oh. Thanks for having me. I, I, first, I want to say that, that I would not be standing here if we did not, as Buc-E's, think that, that Meben is a great home for us. We've spent a lot of time in this area looking for a, a good home, and I think we found it. And, and I want to know, I want everyone to know that, that we would not be bringing this forward if I didn't have the complete confidence that, that City of Meben was behind this, that engineering was behind this, that planning was behind this, that fire and police are behind this, that NC DOT is behind this. We, we have worked for months with all of those groups of folks constantly to come up with, with multiple iterations of plans, improvements, reviews, comments, revisions, reviews, comments. This, this is not a haphazard deal that we do. And, and it's kind of interesting because we, you know, we like to call ourselves the fun store, and, and we are, except there's, there's a lot of, of sausage to be made, you know, beforehand. And so I want to talk to you all about who we are. And I don't, I don't know if any of you all have been to a Buc-E's. It's, it's, I do it for a living, and it's hard for me to explain who and what we are. But I'll, I'll do my best, and I hope that, that between now and, and over the next few weeks, if you haven't been to a Buc-E's, please go to one. I hope everyone who's going to speak tonight has been to a Buc-E's. That would be helpful. So the, the, the first thing we are is big. There's no doubt about it. There's, we, we are big for a purpose. We, we, we are the place where the Suburbans and the fifth-wheelers and the, and the boats and the, the fun stuff stops on a road trip going from here to there. And I know that's a, you know, pretty simple way to put it, but, but we are on busy highways where the, the travelers already are. They're already headed somewhere. They're already going back home or, or going to visit somebody. And we become part of the road trip. It's, it's been that way for, since nineteen eighty-two, when we opened our first one. More particularly, over the last twenty years, when we've focused on these large travel centers. What we are not, again, is we are not a truck stop. Trucks are not allowed in our property. We are a, a, a family road trip destination and just kind of a fun place to go. So I like to, you know, th, those are all the, the boats and whatnot, getting gas early in the morning at our Orange Beach, Alabama store. We like to say that we are, we are fuel agnostic in that we are absolutely aware that the EV world is, is coming our way, and we're happy to be part of it because we're happy to, you know, give you forty-five minutes of our time while your car charges outside to have you inside eat our barbecue. So we will have Tesla chargers, we'll have Mercedes-Benz chargers. So we'll have both Beta and VHS capable systems for EV charging. And we'll start out with, well, I, I believe that we'll start out with twenty-four EV charging stations, which is, I think, what y'all have in Meben today. We've been doing this a while. So that's store number one, right there. And it was built in nineteen eighty-two, and that's the cleanest restroom that you will ever see in Klute, Texas, where, and, and that is also in store number one. That down there is store number forty-five, which is our largest store yet, and similar to the one we're building here in Sevierville, Tennessee, seventy-four thousand square feet. And it's, it's, the, the, the reason that, that we're, we're A, big to begin with, and then now getting bigger is, is this really is a, a, a customer experience destination place. We want you to go in there, be comfortable while you're in there, eat good food, be safe, go to the cleanest restrooms that you will ever see in, in public. And, and so the, the bigger we are, the more time you can spend in, in a little elbow room, and it's just a, a fun experience. And, and, you know, our, our job is to, to make this, you know, road trips are usually fun, but sometimes you're, you know, just trying to get home. And this is a good way to stop and enjoy yourself for a little while. So, back to the restrooms. And, and we, we focus on the restrooms, and I do, for a very good reason. For, for one, our, I think the core of our success has been that we have clean restrooms. Like at the, at the, you know, bottom of the, the pyramid, you can always count on the fact that we will have clean restrooms. And the, the, the only reason we have clean restrooms is because we have the best employees that, that we can, it's, it's hard to explain. The, these folks are, are paid well. There's two hundred of them at least. We, I mean, these, this is three shifts, three hundred and sixty-five days, twenty-four hours a day. Three shifts of folks who are, are walking in the door, are making sixteen, seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour. And, and they are the reason that, that we are so popular. You walk in and you're going to hear, "Good morning, welcome to Buc-E's." It's going to be the cleanest place you've seen. The, they're going to, they're going to pay attention to you. They're not going to be on their phone. It is, it is a philosophy of, of giving the customer the, the best experience, and it comes from, you know, the top down. And so, you know, we like our billboards. We have a little sense of humor once in a while about them. But at the end of the day, we have clean restrooms because we have a really great group of hard workers who, we, we pay well, and, and they can, I, we were just in a store the other day, and the general manager of that store was, was literally a maintenance guy eight years ago. And the food manager of that store, she was a cashier nine years ago. So if you, if you want to spend your life with Buc-E's and make it a career, you can. So here's the good stuff. Texas barbecue is what we're known for, and, and it's, it's basically brisket. And, and we, I will, I will never tell anyone that we have the best barbecue ever because that'll get me shot, and it won't be true. But, but as far as, as a pit stop on the highway in a really clean, friendly place, you're going to be hard for us to find much better, fresh food. All of that, all of our food is made in-house. So all of those, and we have vegetables, we have salads, we have fresh fruit. All of that stuff you see on top is, is made by hand in the store every day. And then those bottom pictures are, are, we are a, a convenience store as well. And, and, and we have plenty of items. What we, what we want you to think of is, is if you just wanted to get in the truck and go to the beach, or get in the truck and go to the park, you could stop here, and you could get anything and everything you needed for that weekend to, you know, to have fun. So that's kind of where we are. And same thing, and you can get a Buc-E's t-shirt while you're at it. The Buc-E's brand has been, you know, it's, it's been exciting to watch us grow outside of Texas. And it's, it's a, it's a, we like to become part of the community. So this, in this case, this is, you know, going to be the Meben Buc-E's. Every small town we go in, you know, they, it, it, with the sign on the sign, we ma, make sure that everyone knows that it's, it's, it's your Buc-E's. It's, it's the community that, that where we get our employees, where we get our partners, where we get our suppliers. And, and, and we will be part of Meben. Our stores are interesting. About a third of them, you know, you, you're going to walk into Buc-E's and come out with things that you never thought you would buy at a, at a large convenience store. But it's, it's a general store-type feeling. You can go in there and buy a, a new plate, serving dishes, nice clothing, candles, art. And, and when we get to the arts and the candles and then some of the crafts and some of the, the, the items that we have in the store come from local craftsmen. So we'll go out three, four, five months before we open and try to find folks who can make enough candles or soap or, or whatever the local guys can come up with. We'd love to have them in our stores. Each store is, is very Buc-E's-centric. It is, it is, the footprint is the same. The bathrooms are on the same side of, of the, the building. Everyone who walks into a Buc-E's, like, knows exactly where everything is. That's what's the same. What is different is, is how we meld ourselves into the community. And, and part of that is having local, you know, local items inside the store. We, we have, we like to, we like to have our, our signs, you know, are pretty prevalent. But we, we have artwork. That's the, the, the Sevierville deal is, is the back of our generator building. Those fellows, those fellows in the, in the orange there are Harvey, Hurricane Harvey. The day we were supposed to have a grand opening in Katy, Texas, and it happened to also be the day that Hurricane Harvey showed up. So instead of a grand opening, we had a, basically a, a, a landing station for National Guard, state troopers, you name it. They were coming in and out of there on helicopters and eating our food and sleeping on our floor. And we just, they just took over the store for a couple, three days while we got through the first part of that. So what we, what you see there, you know, selfies with, with beavers and, and it's just a, it's, it's a, it isn't a- What we, what you see there, you know, selfies with, with beavers and, and it's just a, it's, it's a, it is an anomaly, it's a, it is a unique place. Um, and, and we're happy to say that, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not embarrassed at all about, by what a Buc-Ee's is, uh, we're proud of it. Something to keep in mind, uh, that Amanda brought up is, is. Our, our customers are, are not local, we, we are not the, we're not the corner uh, convenience store. We, if, if you want a Diet Coke and a can of Copenhagen, you're, you're not gonna come into Buc-Ee's. Uh, our, our customers come from a hundred miles away. And they, they know that they're coming to a Buc-Ee's before they ever get in their car. Uh, it's just part of the, the trip and, and that is why we, you know, as far as tourism or, or destination attraction. Um, you know, short of putting a Ferris wheel out front. Um, I don't, I don't know of any better place to be what we could call it, a, a tourist um, attraction. Uh, we have five million folks a year that will walk in the door of, of the Meven Buc-Ee's. And that's a lot of folks to be visiting, five million a year will walk in the, not just go, not just get gas outside, but walk in the door. A lot of folks. Do I hit, do I do that too, or are you taking over now? Oh, thank goodness. Thanks, everybody, we appreciate it, and I'll answer questions, uh, and, and I wanna. I'm just gonna point out that, that I am here to answer questions. And to uh, provide as much background and, and correct information as I can bring. And that is what I'm here for, so feel free to ask me anything you wanna ask, thanks.
Alright, um, Stan mentioned a lot of this in his presentation, but we did wanna highlight, while yes, Buc-Ee's is a concept. And it's its own phenomenon, and it has uh, the ways that it likes to accomplish that. One, one of those pillars is to integrate with the community that, that they go in and to be a part of it. So uh, the ways that we facilitate, facilitate that are with the city's branding, you see it on the signage. Um, the opportunity and focus to go out and find local suppliers and vendors, so that there is some local, um. Local touches inside the store that people recognize as, as being singular to that area. Or marking the, the time that they visited the Meven, Meven Buc-Ee's, and they're different from what you might find in Leeds, Alabama, or Sevierville, Tennessee. Um, also look to, because this is capturing all that, um, all that travel off the interstate. Bringing it into the Meven city limits, stopping those folks and having them spend time there, why not see what else they might like to do in Meven? So the way we do that is, we've, um, Stan and his team have been in talks with Dan Shannon of the Downtown Meven Development Group, I'm, I'm. Apologize, I'm not saying that name right, but um, to, to think about ways that we could, you know, have brochures or have a informational panel. Or the bathroom advertising panel to say, you know, come eat downtown, or come to this local shop, or the Meven Christmas Parade is this day. So that people understand um, that there's lots of other good ways to spend time here in Meven, and to try and facilitate um, that synergy. So thank you for indulging us a little bit about um, Buc-Ee's, since this is such a specific request. Uh, from here, I wanna talk about the signage condition, uh, that staff mentioned in their report. This uh, is a conditional request, and this is uh, the, the signage is, is the conditions um, that, that we've asked for in addition to our site planning. So you've, our site plan, you've seen it a bunch of times already, um, on the left, on the right is. Where those, where the signs go in space, so I just wanted to have you to have some context while we talk about this. You see the one uh, pole, uh, ground sign, pole sign location down by the ramp, and you see three large As. Those are the three wall signs we're gonna talk about. So first, wall signs, um, your ordinance allows um, a sign on every elevation that you have. The formula has two prongs to it, the first prong is one square foot per linear foot of building frontage. The second prong is not to exceed two hundred square feet. So the condition that, that we need, um, that we're asking for tonight is to exceed that second prong of that two hundred square foot maximum. And I hope by the time we get through all this, you'll agree that um, we do that in a way, we ask to do that in a way that's very intentional and, and minimalist. To try and uh, still, still be in keeping with the spirit and intent of your ordinance. And to be in keeping with other signage that you see and you're, you're used to seeing around the city. So um, first off thing you'll notice here is that we do not ask for a sign on the rear elevation. So right away, um, that, that's, you know, a way that we like to show restraint and to not, um, not ask for more than we need. Um, the signage on the front is a total of, you see it here in real life, so the renderings, of course, and then. They actually get built, this one is bigger than what we're proposing here in Meven, but um, you see that's the side elevation you're seeing, and then the front elevation. What you'll notice is that it's just Buc-Ee's, there's no sub signage, there's no, you know, um, other, other um, branding or. Or information that, that we try to convey with wall signs, so again, looking at the elevations here, um. The two sides, the, what would face north and south, uh, face the interstate and, and Senator Ralph Scott are at two hundred and two square feet. So just two square feet over, over your ordinance, um, I, I would submit a very de minimis request there. Um, and then the front, the larger front elevation that faces Chillingwood-Hofffields is two hundred and eighty-five square feet. Again, you see it's, it's just the Buc-Ee's, one singular sign. Um, this is the specifics of how that works out with the math, um, it's the Buc-Ee's area and then the logo area. To get to that square footage that we're asking for. And that's the reduced version on the two sides. Uh, the fuel canopies, they also um, have the opportunity for signage under your ordinance, and that's what we're asking for here. With just the, it's, it's very nice and clean, we don't do um, you know, bright red and yellow canopies with signage all the way down. Or a lot of words all the way down, it's just the one singular logo seal, very clean and very concise branding, um, it's just the button seal, as they call it, on each of those facades. And there you see it in real space, I'll note here, um, the, the wayfinding informational signs um, above each, each pillar there indicate. What type of fuel is on each side, that's just an efficiency and a site planning thing that um, Scott will talk about, that, that helps facilitate. The safety and the efficiency and the uh, moveability inside the parking lot, that's not part of our signage request. Here you see it again, um, a long facade of a canopy, not all cluttered up with a lot of signage, it's just the one clean seal. Um, this is just uh, the, the request in numbers, so I talked about the formula when we first started talking about this, so it, it's good to see that in practice. Our front entrance has four hundred and forty-one linear feet. So that's, remember, your formula allows for one square foot per linear foot, and we're only asking for two hundred and two square feet on the sides and two hundred and eighty-five. On the front, so um, we, we are less than your mathematical part of the formula would allow. We just exceed the overall maximum of two hundred square feet, and I would submit to you that um, that's because. Buc-Ee's is unique and it's big, and uh, you know, your, your ordinance is written as it has to be to be for the entire city. You know, ordinances can't be written for every single particularized instance in which they're gonna be used, but that's why we have this process. To come before you and submit a reasonable proposal and way to, um, way to make that work for specific uses. That we believe still meets the objectives and the intent of your ordinance and um, to do that under your guidance. Uh, the fuel canopies, you see the same thing, um, asking, and you see the percentages, the coverage percentage in that last column, which I think really tells the story. The front entrance wall is just two point three, three-nine percent of that wall. The two side entrances are just two point seven-three percent. The fuel canopies on the uh, front and back, the long sides are just one point eight-two percent. The short sides, they're just under twelve and a half percent, so our coverages are, are very minimal. Um, just to show you some other ways that the sign ordinance is used, is used, and to give you some context. That this, I think, overall is in keeping with how you are used to seeing signs in Meven. A lot of other large, larger big box retailers will use the sub signage approach that I discussed, so you'll see the Big Lowe's sign. Over the main entrance, but then you'll see indoor lumberyard, that's this side, the garden center's over here. You see all the various banners that um, direct you where things are, and different things that are going on. So all of this is within the ordinance and is a different way to approach wall signage for these large retailers. Walmart does the same thing, they of course have their main sign, but then they have the home and pharmacy area, the grocery area. The lawn, lawn and garden area, your pickup, you've got Subway, so they're, you know, they're giving you all the signage information on the wall. Whereas Buc-Ee's just, um, just does Buc-Ee's, and they expect people to know or learn that you know what you're gonna get with that, once you come inside. It entails all the things that Stan just talked about. Again, um, when you think about long, long throes of a facade on a larger building. Another way you see that a lot, of course, is with multiple basins in a shopping center where you have multiple users. And of course, it makes sense that all those users would have their own sign, but that of course, um, you know, creates a much more. Um, mu- much more visual signage than you, we're asking for here, so again, just to give you some context. That um, in, in the scheme of things, in the scheme of your ordinance, this really isn't out of keeping or out of context, or create any, um, any type of. Um, I think guffaw un- under what the Meven signage landscape already allows. So that's the wall sign, let's talk about the ground sign, again, here's your orientation schematic, so you can see what we're talking about. Um, you see the red dot, that's your pole sign location down there on the ramp. And what I want you to notice about this is that this is squarely, um, without a doubt oriented to the interstate. That, that's who this pole sign is for, that, and that's who we're trying to uh, serve with it, and so we're gonna talk about that. Um, this is the schematic, uh, as Ms. Owenby mentioned, the maximum sign, the site, the sign height is ninety feet. Um, that could change a little, we're, we're giving you a maximum here, it could get, it could be less. And that's because once the site is graded and the topography is, lays how it's going to lay. Um, you'll hear from Stan in a moment, there's a very precise methodology to where the sign needs to sit, to be visible above the trees, and that's all we're trying to achieve. If that turns out to be eighty-three feet, then we're good with that. So um, ninety is our maximum though, if, if it turns out that it should have been ninety-five, that's too bad for us, we're, we're committing to ninety. The other thing I wanna point out here is the square footage and how we get to four hundred. Your ordinance allows three hundred, and that's what, that's what we have in just the Buc-Ee's button seal. Um, the way we, the reason we ask for the additional one hundred square feet is that Meven city branding panel. We think that's important, we like doing that, we hope, we hope Meven likes it, um, but that's why we ask for that additional square footage, um. We, because we do need to maintain enough critical mass on that button seal, the surface area for it to do what it needs to do. And create efficient wayfinding on the interstate, um, but then we also would like to have the Meven panel, and that's how we get to four hundred there. Again, to some context, this is um, what you already see in the area, this is the Pilot Travel Center across the way. And you notice they take a different approach where they, similar to the wall signs we saw, they tell you a lot about what's in that facility. On their ground sign, they let you know it's McDonald's, it's a pilot, they let you know their fuel prices, so they're utilizing um, their area to, to say a lot of things. Um, they also utilize both their frontages, which the ordinance allows, allows them to do, so they've got their sign oriented on. Interstate that we just saw and the second one here on Chillingwood-Hofffields Road. Across the street, uh, same approach, the Loves Travel Center, um, you can see, tells us what, what food they're offering and their fuel price. And they also tell us again on Chillingwood-Hofffields Road, so again, just a different approach of how your sign ordinance is being utilized, so you can see in context, um, how this fits in. Uh, again, uh, Lowe's utilizing the two frontages that they have. Um, and I'm gonna let Stan talk about this because this is the very specific part, but the point I just made about the, the height of the pole sign. It, it really is not, um, it's not a hard and fast for Buc-Ee's, it, it doesn't have to be a hundred feet or ninety feet or eighty feet, it just has to be visible. So that's gonna be site-specific, and he has a methodology he's gonna talk to you about, about how we arrived at ninety feet at this location. But what this chart shows you is, is that, that, that is really true. This is the last ten most recent sign approvals, and you can see they range from seventy feet all the way up to a hundred and fifty feet. And, and that's because they're all site-specific, and they're all based on just what is needed and necessary to have an effective sign on an interstate at each of these locations, so um. That, you know, again, it's not about some hard and fast rule, it's just about visibility. So I'm gonna let Stan talk to you about how we came up with ninety feet here in Meven.
Me again. So the methodology is I float a balloon. Uh, the, the, the point of our signage uh, is, is so that. Uh, folks are going, you know, eighty miles an hour down a freeway. Can, can see our signage in a, within a distance that allows them to see it, recognize it. Move over to the exiting lane and, and exit and get to our store safely. Um, sure, Waze is gonna tell you how to get there and, and Siri and everybody else is gonna give you an idea of where it is, but it. Our, I think your experience and mine uh, is that the, the sign is kinda the, that third. That third leg of information that tells you, oh, the Buc-Ee's is really there. Um, I've, I've, can't tell you how many times I've, I've been lured by the, what we call the blue sign on the highway that says there's, there's a. I don't know, McDonald's uh, at the next exit, and then you, you, so you take the next exit. And then you get to the next blue sign after you've taken the exit, and it's McDonald's, two point four miles down the street. And I feel so violated when that happens. And so uh, our point is, is that, is it A, we want you to see our sign, it's, 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 we wanna stop you. Uh, on your trip. Uh, B, it's, it's, it's branding, it's who we are, it's, 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 it's no different than, you know, a McDonald's. It's, it's part of, of who we are and it's part of, you know, seeing the, the kids seeing the big lollipop, as we call it. And going, you know, oh my gosh, there it is, let's go, and you're going, oh boy, not again. Um, so, so I float a balloon, I go to where I think uh, our sign's gonna end up. That's a picture of, of where, so I'm looking, I'm going westbound. And I'm, I'm close to the, that's the exit that I want over there on the right. And, and I'm looking, if, if I'm gonna see that sign, it's gonna be over on the right. And so I will float a balloon, uh, that one is at eighty feet. Going westbound, and I'll video the whole time, so I, I have, you know, all sorts of shots and angles, but. What I'm, what I'm trying to show you there is that an eighty-foot sign westbound. Uh, at the exit that is, you know, in, in time to move over is, is visible. Uh, anything less would, would, would not be. Um, that is a hundred-foot sign, taking the same thing, westbound. Uh, and it's the first time you see that sign, which is a little further away from the exit, you see the exit down a little further on your right. And it, it just shows you um, how, you know, signage can. The, the, the perception of seeing the sign based on where you are is, is critical, and I'll get to that in a minute. So now I'm going, if I'm going eastbound, uh, that is my little circle, little man down there is, is kinda where you need to be to see the sign. In order to move over and, and get off, and that's why those, that, the blue sign right there is, is telling you that next exit is, is your exit and. Uh, at, at eighty, so the balloon at eighty feet, and I'm sorry for the poor quality, it's in the morning, I don't have much. Time before the wind starts blowing my balloon around, so I'm at the mercy of the, the rising sun, thank goodness that day, and so. You, you cannot see the, the sign at eighty feet. You can see it at a hundred feet. And so wh- what, what we do is, is we, I, I would love a hundred-foot sign, I, I would, I mean, if. If it were me, I'd be asking for a hundred-foot sign, just like I did, you know, the, the last ten signs, pole signs. Uh, that I've had approved, you know, the average is a hundred and six feet, so again, we're on a freeway. Uh, we're, we're in a, a commercial area uh, where, where signage is important, and so. You know, I would ask for a hundred feet, Ashley wanted, wanted me to ask for ninety, and I agreed. And, and what I'm hoping is that, uh, I'll go back, that was, what I'm hoping is that by the. uh, I'll go back. What I'm hoping is that by the time we get to final grade and all of the, you know, all of the site work is done, whatever trees are going to be removed, and there's not many on that right of way that are going to be removed, but whatever, whatever clearing we can do and whatever site raising we can do, uh, that a, a 90-foot sign is, is going to be okay. And I'm pretty comfortable with that. What I will do, uh, is, is I will, once that happens, I will, and that, that was my deal with Ashley, is, is that once, once we get to the point where I can, I can make a, a, a specific case about where the sign is really going to be and how tall it really needs to be, I'll do another balloon test. And if we can see the sign going both ways at 80 feet, it, it'll be an 80-foot sign. Uh, so that was, that was kind of the, the give and take we, we had with the city. Um, so Amanda did a good job of, of comparing our signage to, to other signage around the, the world. Uh, this is, this is what would be allowed if, by right, as they say, if we just followed the, the sign ordinance as written. Um, I would have a 60-foot sign along the frontage of the freeway. I would have another 60-foot sign on Hollingwood, I mean, Trawlingwood, and I would have a 35-foot sign over on Scott Boulevard. So, um, and then I would have four wall signs and, and what, what it, what it amounts to, uh, is math again. And per ordinance, uh, th- that is one calculation. So a total height of 155 feet and a total sign area of 1,600 square feet and a total number of signs is seven. And what I'm asking for is a, is a total height of 90 feet, a total area of sign of a thousand 89 feet and a total number of signs of four. So just an idea of, of kind of where we stand against the ordinance itself. I think that's it. Right? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate y'all hanging with us. Um, now that we've been through the rezoning aspect and a little bit about the use, um, I want to transition to the special use permit analysis. Of course, that's your, the second motion before you tonight, and that is specifically, if you recall, to get to travel center. Um, the only way a travel center or travel plaza is allowed, um, in Meben is in the heavy manufacturing district with a special use permit. So that's why this aspect exists of our request. Um, you see my asterisk there? That's again, because it's travel center light, if you will, because we are not a truck stop. And that is not what we're asking for. Um, of course, this, this part of your request is, is specific. It's, the scope of it is finite. So your, your analysis is looking at the four findings of fact. Will the use, uh, will it or will it not materially endanger public health or safety? Will it or will it not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property? Will the use be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located? And will the use be in general conformity with the land use plan or other plans and policies officially adopted by the Meben City Council? So that's the analysis before you, um, as we look at the special use permit request. And of course, it's also finite and specific in the way that you apply that test to just the site plan that we've talked about tonight. It's not the whole universe of travel plazas or the ways they could exist. It's the specific way that we've asked for it to exist. So let's delve into each part of the test. Uh, the first one being that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety. So you're going to hear from some other folks on this one, but what I want to first point out is, of course, that this prong is baked into the process that we have been through for the last better part of this year. I think we started in February, at least with staff. Um, so that technical review committee process that's been talked about tonight, those five rounds of review, that is meant to ensure compliance with all of your ordinance provisions and all of your regulatory requirements, that all of, all of those exist to ensure the public health and safety. That's why, um, we have, cities have police power to take care of the public health and safety and the public interest. And so that's what these ordinances and, uh, development regulations do. And that is what the technical review committee is making sure that our plan adheres to. So the fact that we've been through that process and we've come out the other side with a recommendation for approval, as you see documented in the planning project report in front of you, that's something we work very hard for. That's something we appreciate staff working very hard for. And that's, you know, that's what our, our whole goal is to come before you, um, when we finally get to the hearing with that, um, recommendation for approval, because that means that, um, it is a, it's, it's a seal of approval that we are not materially endangering the public health or safety because we're meeting your requirements that are meant to protect those things. Um, so how do we do that? We do that through site planning specifics that are checked against your ordinance and through a transportation impact analysis process. So I want you to hear about both of those things from the experts. Um, I'm going to let Austin Watts from Kimley Horn first come up and talk about those site planning items.
Good evening. Austin Watts with Kimley Horn, 200 South Tryon Street in Charlotte. Um, as Amanda has, has mentioned, um, one of the first, uh, first pieces that we're doing is coming before TRC in order to have them vet our site plan. And what you see before you is not the first plan that we brought in front of staff. Um, and the staff can attest, Ashley and Franz here, they're very thorough. And I'm sure that everybody in the Buc-E's team can, can attest that, uh, the comments were very thorough. In addition to that, Buc-E's, as well as Kimley Horn, we want to make sure that the design we are presenting, uh, is in keeping with the health, uh, safety and welfare of the public as well as the, uh, the Buc-E standards. So, um, as was already mentioned, you know, there's been already five different iterations of the site plan, uh, that has polished it to the point that it is today. Um, after this, this is not done. Um, should we receive approval, uh, from, uh, from planning board and from, uh, from council, then we've got to start the process over. We're going to go back through TRC for our construction documents, which will take the existing set of plans, which is, you know, call it five or 10 sheets, and then fully, uh, flesh that out. That'll be a very, uh, very detailed set of plans that's in keeping with the standards that a contractor is going to require to build it, uh, as well as the, uh, what the state and various other agencies are going to require for us to pull permits for that. All right. Um, after that, uh, let's see, I don't know if you've got a slide for public benefits?
No.
Okay. I'll roll, I'll simply roll back into that. Um, and what we can see here, we go back one slide. All right. How you go, is it this one? There we go. Wrong button. All right. Um, the, uh, there's going to be a 10-foot, as far as, uh, public benefits, uh, that Buc-E's is providing, there's going to be a 10-foot multi-use path. Uh, and you can see that, uh, that's going to be from Senator Ralph Scott Parkway, the entrance on the, on the right side, uh, and it's going to extend up. It's going to go down Trawlingwood and then it's going to cross over, uh, over the interstate. Um, in addition to that, we've got a extension to the, uh, to the sewer main, uh, that we are running along the, uh, we're going to call it the planned west side of the project. And we're going to extend that past our site and then underneath, uh, Trawlingwood in order to facilitate, uh, a city project for a, a pump station that's going to be rerouted, uh, to that area. And then, uh, past that, we're going to be, um, providing all the required, uh, infrastructure that's, uh, that's required by the state is, uh, on our offsite facilities that we'll get to later. And it's one of the, the perks of that is we've been able to speed up, uh, some of these planned improvements, uh, and, uh, allow those to be, uh, be done, uh, several years in advance. So that's all I've got for now. I'll be back here in a little bit to talk about a couple of other items.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Scott Radcliffe. I'm Director of Engineering for Buc-E's. Um, I work at the Buc-E's headquarters, this is 32, uh, excuse me, 327 FM 2004 in Lake Jackson, Texas. And I appreciate the opportunity to visit, spend a few minutes talking about some of the internal workings of a Buc-E's facility. As Dan mentioned early on, we're unique. We're big. Everybody says, why are y'all so big? Well, the main thing is, is we want to have a safe and enjoyable experience for our customers. We want the people to be able to get in off of the roadway system into our facilities safely and efficiency, and efficiently. And that's through the use of several concepts and practices that we've employed in our facilities dating back for over 15 years, longer than I've been working for the company. And that has to do with our drive aisles. Our drive aisles are larger than typical. Most drive aisles are 24 feet wide, allowing two cars to pass. Ours range anywhere from 50 feet, 45 feet. Our narrowest aisle is 32 feet. And that is to allow for somebody who drives a one-ton pickup truck to be able to turn into a drive aisle or parking stall off of a drive aisle without making a two-point turn. It also allows for clear site corridors, allowing folks to enter into the facility, driving in, making the appropriate moves and being able to see a child who may come out from between cars, or be able to see pedestrians crossing. All those elements play into how our site is lined out. We also use wayfinding. And that's kind of an, an, a nomenclature that's thrown around a lot these days, but simple pavement markings and signage, allowing folks to know how to get and maneuver around the site with ease and, and quickly. All those taking into account also the fact that we try to digest, it's kind of a, a transportation term that we use, folks into the facility. So providing as much and as efficient ingress points into the facility to allow folks to get out of the public system and into the site safely and efficiently. You may notice that the drive aisles and the, and the parking bays are turned in certain directions. And that is to help to minimize the amount of conflicts that happen between incoming traffic and those that be backing out and pulling into, into stalls. All those things play into account along with the pedestrian access, which you see here with the, uh, with the bicycle plaza and the pedestrian access to the, the 10, the 10-foot multi-use path. All those play into how the site is laid out. And so I just kind of wanted to explain the fact that, yes, we have 650 stalls for parking. That is because the amount of volume, we got to be able to receive it. And we got to be able to provide for folks to have, not have to circle the parking lot, looking for a parking stall, not have to circle the fuel pumps to find a fuel pump, but allowing them to have that opportunity to enter into the site, identify a location where they can get into a parking stall or into a fueling position without having to circle the parking lot. Um, all those things play into account along with, uh, you know, we've got special places for DEF and the special fuels, as well as special parking for the RVs and larger vehicles to allow them to find a place in which they can get out of the traffic, get into a parking spot, go in and visit the store. All those things, just kind of wanted to give you all a few minutes, uh, explanation on why things look so big and why things are laid out the way they are. And that is to allow for internal circulation and optimal use of the facility. And I'll be around for questions also. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Earl Llewellyn with Kimley Horn, uh, traffic engineer. Uh, first a little bit about the TIA process itself, traffic impact analysis. Uh, it's based on NC DOT guidelines. So the first thing that we do is hold a scoping meeting with town staff, NC DOT staff to discuss the parameters, the study area, the type of study that it is. And the, the traffic volumes that we're basing the study off of are existing traffic counts, uh, traffic from other approved developments in the area, ambient traffic growth, a background growth, and site traffic. Site traffic is, is Buc-E's traffic. And instead of using the ITE methodology for trip generation, we use actual Buc-E's facilities. So it's, it's fine tuned for Buc-E's. All of the scoping information is put in a memo, uh, and it's approved by town and NC DOT staff before we even begin the study. Thank you. So the TIA itself analyzes capacity, queuing and weaving analyses during AM peak hours, PM peak hours, and Saturday peak hours. The original traffic study was submitted on March 15th, and there were two addenda to address questions from DOT, uh, modifications to the site layout, the access points. Uh, those studies have been reviewed by the local DOT office in Graham, as well as the congestion management unit of DOT. That's, that's what they spend all their day doing is reviewing TIA's. So, um, in addition, the town's consultant has also reviewed the traffic study. And based on the analyses and their comments and working through the TRC meetings that we've had, uh, Buc-E's is committed to make numerous improvements that I will show you on this graphic. And if we could zoom into this area right here, is that possible? What I'm going to do is try to walk you through these improvements and put them into context. Um, north is to the left. The gray areas are existing pavement. Orange areas are new pavement, where new lanes will be. The red areas are concrete medians. And then you can sort of see in yellow, that's the 10-foot multi-use path that wraps around the site. So starting here in this area, uh, we will be widening the I-40 westbound exit ramp. Is this my pointer on top? Okay. If you guys can see this on your screen as well. Okay. We'll be widening this ramp here for an additional lane so that you have dual left turns coming westbound toward the Buc-E's site. Those two lanes will continue all the way along the Buc-E's frontage on Trawlingwood-Hoffeld Road, terminating one as a right turn lane onto Senator Ralph Scott Road. We'll head in that direction in a moment. We'll also be widening the on-ramp here to receive a second lane, which will be dual left turns coming northbound to turn to head westbound on I-40. That, in addition to the through, the two southbound through lanes, two left turn lanes turning northbound onto that ramp, requires the bridge to be widened. So we're basically widening for two additional lanes across the bridge as well as for the 10-foot multi-use path. And there'll be, uh, traffic signal modifications at both of these ramp termini. So here, here at this, uh, ramp intersection, we will have two southbound through lanes. We will have two northbound through lanes. We will have a reconstructed, uh, right turn lane to turn onto eastbound I-40. We'll also be widening the ramp to provide longer storages for the turn lanes there, providing both a left turn lane and dual right turn lanes in this area. As I mentioned before, traffic signal modified to accommodate that landage. If you could shift plan right just a little bit. Perfect. Thank you. So in this area, again, we have two southbound through lanes that continue all the way through the frontage. We have a left turn lane that's turning into the Pilot driveway. We have a right turn lane exclusively into this right in, right out driveway. I'll get into, uh, the opposite approach in a moment. Moving down to the second point of access, again, two through lanes, one right turn lane into the site driveway, a left turn lane northbound into the site driveway, all under traffic signal control. Dual left turn lanes coming out of the site to head north. And that means we have to accommodate two lanes from this point all the way through to the interchange. Moving, moving a little bit farther down to Senator Ralph Scott Road, we can. Perfect. Thank you. Again, here you can see a little bit better, the multi-use path that, that wraps around the site. And the driveway onto Senator Ralph Scott Road here will have exclusive right turn lanes, left turn lane, and exclusive right and left turn lanes coming out of that driveway. You know, I think I said, but if I didn't, uh, the, the new driveway here will be under signal control, obviously.
Okay. Do they, will they have signal control on Senator Ralph Parkway?
Yes. Yes, that's an existing signal.
No, no, I mean, in your driveway. I know it's an existing where it comes into Trawleywood-Hoffelds, but will there be anything on your driveway? Is it? It's unsignalized.
That's right.
Okay.
Um, so I mentioned already the, uh, multi-use path that wraps the site, goes across the bridge and ties into the sidewalk that is at, uh, the Loves Travel Center. So with all of these improvements in place, and they will all be in place before the store opens, Buc-E's going to make sure that. If traffic doesn't work, Buc-E's doesn't work. Traffic operations are graded on a level A through F. Traffic operations are graded on a level A through F, with A being best. The NC DOT standard is Level Service D. With these improvements in place, all of these intersections will operate at C or better. So better than the adopted standard. All queues are going to be addressed, all weaving works within defined, excuse me, defined standards, and volume to capacity ratios are all acceptable. And I too will be back to address maybe some other comments, but I'll turn it over to Amanda.
To round out this finding about not materially endangering public health or safety, I just want to revisit and incorporate some previous comments into this part of the record. We've talked about the importance of proper wayfinding. That's an important aspect of the safety on the interstate, so that we create safe opportunities for folks to move over into the exiting lane in a way that is not erratic or having to be too spontaneous for other drivers. So the wayfinding that we have carefully planned out and explained to you also goes to this finding in that it is a safety feature of the site. All right. Our next finding, this is number two, is that the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. So again, as I mentioned earlier, McNary and Associates performed this analysis for us, so we have Mr. Marcus Orr to walk us through that report.
Marcus Orr, I am a commercial appraiser with McNary and Associates at 1616 Battleground Avenue out of Greensboro, and I'm also local to Almonds here. So we undertook a study at their request to see if there was any impact on the surrounding properties, particularly the residential, was residentially zoned properties that are there, some industrial zoning under the light manufacturing, and also the retail zoning, your B2 zoning across the street. So the first thing that we looked at, I don't know, do I have slides up here? Okay. Good deal. So we looked at each of the exits that come through Almonds County, particularly the ones that had travel stops already. Along this corridor, we have, we also included the exit at 157, which is in Orange County, but part of Meben and the Petro that is sitting there. We looked at all of these travel centers and the ones that did not have travel centers, and we looked at prices, the high, median, low, average prices at each of these interchanges and within a mile of each exit, and within two miles of each exit, to see what the trends were, to see if there was any impact on residential prices at the exits that already had travel centers. If you'd like to hear numbers, we can certainly go through those, but I will tell you what we found is that, generally speaking, the exits that had travel centers had higher housing prices within a mile and two miles than the exits did not, that did not have a travel center at those. And one of those exceptions was Exit 154 does not have a travel center at it, and the average close prices over the last year are higher than two of the exits that do have travel centers, but they're not higher than all the exits that have travel centers. But it's still higher than all of Almonds and lower than all of Meben. But the ones with travel centers was Exit 150, which has two, Pilot and Forligna, and the average close prices are higher than three of the exits that run through Almonds that don't have travel centers, lower than all of Almonds County, and higher than Hall River, both within a mile and two miles. Exit 152, which has the Gloves and the Pilot where we're at, there were no listings or closed sales within one mile within the last year. However, within the two-mile range, the average close price is higher than five of the six exits that don't have travel centers. So we see a trend there, and that's, this one in particular is with housing that was built in '22 and '23. And we did extend that out and looked at all home sales, and we basically found the same results. The exits that had travel centers were showing a higher average price than the exits that do not. So we cannot show that there's any negative impact for travel centers on residential pricing in particular. In addition to that, we looked at the other surrounding uses, which were industrial and retail, and I'll show you where Meben stacks up with that. We could not undertake this study looking at a mile or two-mile radius from each exit, because it just doesn't work out like that with residential and retail. So what we did is we looked at the submarkets, and this submarket for industrial properties, all of our travel centers are in the southeast, southeast submarket, and within that submarket, the prices trended by second highest in the county. They had the highest rent increases and among some of the highest per square foot rents in all of Almonds County. So there was no negative impact shown on industrial prices. Meben sits pretty well, and Hall River both, with the travel centers, they're showing just higher industrial pricing. So we don't think there would be any impact to industrial pricing to move to the heavier zoning. Within the retail market, you're looking at the same retail market as the submarket for industrial properties, it's the southeast Almonds submarket, and your rental rates there for retail properties are among the highest in the county at $18.04 a square foot right now. The second highest is the Burlington submarket overall, which is at $15.58, so you're sitting pretty well within the southeast submarket for retail prices as well. There is a higher vacancy rate within this submarket, should back up for the industrial properties, because you've had more industrial space come online within that submarket. But overall, both the retail and industrial submarkets are showing markedly better than the submarkets that do not have travel stops. So that is, that's where we sit with what we found, is your residential prices seem to do better at the sites that do have truck stops, travel centers, and your industrial and retail all seem to do better at these exits. So we saw no evidence among what we studied. If anybody wants to know anything about the methodology we used or exact numbers, I'd certainly be willing to share them. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay. Thank you.
And of course, all of our experts will be here if you come up with questions later as the discussion goes. So this leads us to the third prong of your analysis. The use will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located. So for this item, we, again, look at the planning project report documentation. You heard me kind of touch on these items, and you heard staff touch on these items in its presentation, but you see it there in writing, documented right in front of you. The result of that, the process we've been through for most of this year is that the staff has found that we are in harmony, the proposed use is in harmony with the area. And I would submit to you that's because of the existing land use pattern, which we've already talked about once tonight, we'll look at it briefly again, and the use of site planning strategies that speak to compatibility issues. So again, here's that existing land use pattern. We can be brief here because we've already talked about it, but we are by the interstate at a heavily traveled interchange where you would expect to find a use like this, and indeed you already do. We have two fully fleshed out travel centers already at this interchange, and of course, we have a lot of industrial uses here at this interchange as well because of the North Carolina Commerce Park. And you see your zoning pattern there, again, just showing you the regulatory landscape in place that is the reason for this land use pattern, in which we fit right into. Site planning elements for compatibility were also an important part of the design here and an important part of our TRC review, so I'm going to let Austin talk about those briefly.
Again, Austin Watts with Kimley Horn. To speak about buffers, all right, so the buffers that we have along the front and along the side is going to be, at a minimum, what is required by code. Again, we've gone through multiple iterations of TRC with more to come, so obviously we're going to have to meet the ordinance and meet the buffers. But one of the benefits to the community of this particular site are the existing stream buffers that exist essentially on all sides except for our frontage along Trolleywood. So you can see here, on the side, on the bottom, and on the other side, we have existing streams that we are staying out of. And those streams are 50 feet from the normal Ohio watermark on each side of the stream. So it's a minimum of 100-foot wide buffer that by default is baked into this particular site. And like I mentioned, we're staying out of those, out of those stream buffers. We're spending extra money. So you can see that we've got retaining walls in multiple areas to allow us to stay out of impacting the stream, and the only instances where we are is where we have a little bit of sewer crossing here, and then we've got, obviously, the required crossing in order to get over to Senator Ralph Scott Parkway. We are in the 100-foot floodplain a little bit on this bottom corner, but again, we'll have to permit that impact there, and then any impacts to any wetlands, again, we're staying very small impacts, I think, less than a quarter acre, and we'll have to permit that through the Army Corps. We are not in a protected watershed, and again, we are staying out of the buffers, out of the streams. Any questions on our buffering? Thank you. Actually, I'll go ahead and speak on lighting now, if you'd like, while I'm here. And the last item I'll state is that lighting, again, is part of the TRC review. All of our lighting will meet, will meet the ordinance, and generally, that's in keeping with Section 6.6, I believe, and which will be full cutoff lighting. It'll be zero-foot candles at the property line.
I'll just mention one other site-specific item, again, one you've already heard about, but that needs to be stated at this part of the analysis, is the signage. You heard we are foregoing a sign along Trolleywood-Hoffelds Road that is meant to be respectful of the corridor and of other neighbors, and also by not putting a sign to the rear facade, again, just to try to only ask for what we need and to keep the area as free of that as possible. So we'll look at our last piece of the analysis here. The use will be in general conformity with the land use plan or other plans and policies officially adopted by the Meben City Council. So again, our first piece of evidence here is your planning project report that does find on page four, consistency with Meben by design, its strategies and objectives, and then, of course, in the staff recommendation, this is restated on page nine. So looking at Meben by design, we've talked about this. This is a designated G1 industrial area, which is designated such because it has the greatest access to the travel corridor and the greatest access to infrastructure. It's part of the North Carolina Commerce Park. It's for destination-oriented uses, it's for employment centers, and it's to support industrial uses in this location. And I hope you'll agree, after hearing all of this, that we do do each of those things. Stan talked about the high employment numbers, that it's around the clock, three shifts, 200 employees that will be employed here at good wages with corporate benefits, 401K, health, dental, all of those things. This is, of course, destination-oriented, I think definitionally so. We capture traffic that already exists, and we want it to come into Meben, spend money in Meben and Almonds County, and perhaps go visit other things in Meben that are worth seeing and doing. And of course, I think that this, by being in the Commerce Park, it provides a synergistic slight alternative to some of the industrial uses in traffic that we already have here. Of course, as we talked about at the top of the night, this site today is slated to be just under 300,000 square feet of distribution space, truck docks, loading bays, semi-trailer truck parking. So instead of that, I think this offers a nice alternative to still keep heavy uses, heavy impact uses away from residential areas, put them in places where they make sense, but, you know, be a little bit different than the distribution uses and the, just the industrial type of in-and-out trips. This will be something that goes well with those uses, utilizes the infrastructure well, but isn't introducing more truck traffic to the area. We're also, of course, you've seen this, meeting your comprehensive transportation goals with the roadway widening that Earl Llewellyn described in detail there across Trolleywood-Hoffelds Road, and a key factor there that I'll just reiterate is that these are planned projects that were unfunded and that are now being able to be delivered at no cost to the city, also ahead of schedule, ahead of when they ever would have happened under the state program. We're also meeting your bicycle and pedestrian transportation plan, design goals and objectives. You've heard about this earlier, but it's your public infrastructure goal 2.1, to improve safety and confidence of pedestrians as they access major streets and other highly-traveled roadways. This is the 10-foot multi-use path. That's why this is so important on the site, because it allows people to have a safe way to access the site, move across the site by foot or on bikes, and then, once they get in the site, they have a safe haven to go to. They have the bicycle plaza. It has racks, as many racks as we have ADA spaces, and has a little repair area there if you need to refill your tire or patch a tire or something like that. So ensuring that we meet that goal in its full purview, or we meet that requirement of the UDO. We also have an internal sidewalk system that connects pedestrians back to that multi-use path, so you're not just on your own to navigate the parking lot, you can get there safely and get back to that path. We also are meeting the utility plans and objectives of the city. You heard this from Mr. Watts' comments earlier. The city has a goal to be able to reroute some of the flow for the pump station down in this area, and by extending our sewer main through the whole site under Trolleywood-Hoffelds Road, we're facilitating that objective. We're also in the North Carolina Commerce Park. This is a key feature because this is a big commitment that Meben and the county and the city of Graham have all made. It's 1,200 acres of economic development zone. It spans those three jurisdictions that I just named, and all three of those jurisdictions, including Meben, have put in significant investment to make this successful. They've provided utilities here in big capacities so that these uses will come to this area and provide these jobs and economic opportunities to the city and to the residents. And so that's exactly what's being facilitated by a proposal like this. The Commerce Park is governed by an interlocal agreement between those three jurisdictions. It provides for shared utility provision, we just talked about that, and shared tax revenue. So a project like this, you heard it, 5 million people coming in the door each day, that's a lot of tax revenue to benefit the city and the county. It's a shared commitment to create economic opportunity, and we think that this plan really does that. This has, it's been in place for about 10 years now, and it's thriving. You've got the Walmart Distribution Center, you've got the Lidl Distribution Center, UPS Center. Crow Holdings just broke ground on the 400,000 square feet of warehouse space that it had approved along with this site just over a year ago. And of course, now this proposal to round that out, and as I mentioned earlier, what I would submit to you is a synergistic use to all those other uses we've just named and to the goals and objectives of the Commerce Park, and I think really rounds it out nicely and adds an additional element and feature to this economic development zone. And of course, as you've heard tonight, by meeting all the plans of the Unified Development Ordinance, of course, that's also an adopted plan and policy of the city of Meben that we have to meet and that we are meeting. That takes us to the end of our analysis. I do just want to mention, before we wrap up here, we did do some neighborhood outreach. We mailed out letters to everyone on the city's notification range, so everyone that gets a letter from the city also got a letter from us. We invited everyone to an in-person meeting. We held that meeting here in Meben on November 8th. We had three people attend, so we had a nice intimate conversation, were able to be, you know, responsive to singular questions. Those questions were primarily about traffic improvements and timing. So we walked through the same things you heard tonight. We did hold an in-person or an in-home follow-up meeting with our neighbor across the street who will have to work and navigate our driveway across from their driveway, and that resulted in a modification of that driveway location to meet their request and to facilitate what they wanted from the site so that that driveway lined up with their needs better. And so we were able to do that. We didn't, I did not have any other inquiries via phone or email. So this here is the summary of the folks that accepted our invitation to get more information, and we're excited tonight to hear more of that, since we didn't have much of it during our neighborhood meeting. we didn't have much of it during our neighborhood meeting. So with that, I appreciate your patience and your attention to get through all those details. It's a big project, so I wanted to be thorough. We're all here for questions, and we look forward to answering anything you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Our questions first and then.
You did, you did say 5 million people a day. I think you might want to adjust.
Thank you so much. 5 million people a year. That's an important clarification.
You scared a few people there.
I apologize. Thank, thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. One of the things that I think the public is pretty concerned about is the potential for fuel spills, either fuel kind of spilling on the ground as a matter of just regular fueling or some kind of accident. Can somebody walk us through the scenario where, let's say there's, in particular, I'm thinking like a very severe storm, we got two inches of rain over the weekend, let's say we get four inches of rain, and one incident, that's going to lift a lot of fuel off of the pavement. Can you walk us through what happens to that, to that fuel?
Okay, there's two things in play. Our underground storage tank meets and exceeds all state requirements. As it relates to the spillage and the oil spots even out in the parking lots like you have here, we've taken and designed our parking lots in such a fashion that anything that spills flows through a system of filtration devices in order to separate the hydrocarbons from the regular water. So our fuel delivery pad where our truck, our trucks are dumping the fuel into the underground storage tanks, that area is protected everywhere around, the fuel canopy itself is protected in that same fashion. So in the, in the event that there is a large spill, which I don't know of any that have been in my existence with the company where we've had anything of a large spill, we have, you know, somebody who spills some on the ground, and our team goes out there and immediately cleans it up because we like clean parking lots. But those, those spills, if there is any washings or any runoff that occurs from any of those areas where fueling is being dispensed either from the dispensers or into the tanks that is collected in a separate device and is maintained and cleaned in accordance with the manufacturer's specifications.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you show on one of those site plan slides where those underground tanks will be located?
Let's see, maybe. Yeah, that one will work just fine. Okay. Is the pointer working? Maybe? The top button? Yeah, okay. It's not quite centered. Okay. Right here is where the underground storage facilities are located. And that is where the tanks and their monitoring systems and their isolated, there's a whole bunch of designed elements that go underground that surround these tanks, and then they're in a bed of pea gravel, and all that runs through special monitoring and filtration system also. And then our fuel canopies, as I was saying a moment ago, all the way around this whole perimeter, around anything that flows around or from underneath the canopy is collected also in those treatment oil-water separators that separate the hydrocarbons from the runoff.
Just to follow up, so the, so it sounded like you guys had a meeting with a person who lived across the street, and that person requested that you move the southern driveway about like 50 feet farther to the south. Because I, I was noticing with our packets, there was included a conceptual site plan from November 8th, which is before you met with this person. And then there's one from about three weeks later, which is after. It looks like moving the driveway required you to make some changes. In particular, you had to move the fuel tanks because you could no longer fit them at their previous location. And it also looks like, and I don't, I don't know if this was connected to that meeting, but you, you moved the, the, you moved the entrance to the store so that now the entrance lines up with that first, the first pull-off. And then you've also done a thing where your crosswalk kind of comes down from the bike plaza, but then sort of disappears and reappears at the other fuel island. Yeah, it sort of goes there, but then it comes out at the, yeah.
There's, there's actually, it's not illustrated here, there's actually a crosswalk that connects the store to this canopy as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's the interconnection. Part of our AD requirements is that everybody have access to all the different various fuel types. And so there is crosswalk, it's not illustrated on this drawing here, but there will also be a crosswalk that will exist here that'll provide you with that interconnectivity. And yes, the fuel tanks were relocated over here in order to provide, going back to what I was talking about with the inner circulation of traffic, we have to also account for those deliveries that come in. How are they going to get it in? How are they going to avoid the pedestrians and the people and the customers that are coming to the store? And so we try to make it so that those truck circulation paths don't interfere with pedestrians or our customers coming into the store.
Thank you. I have one last question, which is, there's a slide where it was showing a comparison table between what the, the signs that they're going to do and what the ordinance required. Can you go back to that slide? It was just tabular data. Yeah, no, wait, no, so yes, no, it's not that one, it's the next. Yeah. Nope, nope, that's.
That's it.
Yes, okay. So I had a concern about this, which I felt like it was a little bit misleading because it, it implies that the, for the data in the square on the top, it implies that that's allowed by the ordinance, but actually the ordinance allows you a maximum of 200 square feet of wall signs.
Per facade.
Per, oh, okay.
Per side.
Per side, okay. Oh, but they're, okay. So the.
Ordinance will let them have four.
So the ordinance would have allowed, and I apologize, I didn't articulate that well, the ordinance would allow one square foot per linear foot, up to a maximum of 200 per wall.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll make a few comments. Well, you know, here we are, right? And I know there's probably a lot of people in the audience thinking, you know, why Meben? I mean, how did we get to this spot? And I'll just make a few general comments, you know, as a whole, before we really do anything else. We have received a lot of criticism over the last few years of the planning board and the city council out in the public sphere. We, we, we hear that all the time. So why? You know, we're here, and I made some comments, so I'll make sure I don't miss anything. We're here due this, due to the site situational factors of this location and for Meben as a whole. We are located right between the triad and the triangle. We have a dual interstate system running right through our city limits. We have other important infrastructure already in place. We have a good quality of life here in Meben at the moment. Our tax rate is reasonable, and we are very developer-friendly. And so what's the difference between here and a couple of miles down the road, for example, in Orange County, we'll say? I'd say tax rate and the developer-friendly comes into play. That being said, I've, I've been very vocal about how officials have talked over the years, probably for 20 years, about growth that's coming. You know, saying things like, it's coming whether we want it or not, indicating you hadn't seen anything yet. Maybe they meant Buc-E's. You know, just being so fatalistic about true large expansive growth. And so, you know, a city should be able to have the, within its authority, have the ability to control growth when it can. And we try to do that, and I, I think the council does too. However, we have been caught in this growth loop and for quite some time now. And what I mean by that is growth begets growth. And it's not really just from a developmental, developmental perspective, but a city's perspective. For example, approving like a Tanger or another large apartment complex or a large single-family residential or even a Buc-E's. You, the city has to grow to support that. And so we need infrastructure, utility capacity, more police, fire, personnel, ladder, fire trucks, and cars, offices, police stations. We're talking about that right now, by the way. We have to upgrade our water treatment plant, that's currently ongoing. The personnel insurance, vacation, you know, so you look at these things, and the, the new growth me, means that we need more growth to pay for the last growth that we approved in a way. So it's this vicious cycle that we get into, and it's hard to get out of. It's hard to get out of unless you make a conscious effort. And I, I'm not saying the council doesn't, I'm not saying we don't, but it's something we do need to take into consideration because Meben is no longer a small town anymore. It's just not. We have, we, we're, we're growing, we're growing. And so I, again, my comments are more general in nature, that we need to really pay close attention to how we grow in the future. In regard to this proposal, honestly, you could flip a coin, and I could argue quite convincingly that this development should or should not be developed. I mean, you, you could make a case either way. You look at things like the number of jobs created, you know, the hourly wages and how it's going to affect us. That's, you know, positives. And then you, you look in the TIA and you see 2,298 trips during a peak hour on a Saturday. I mean, that is, that's, we've never seen anything like that before. And in fact, that's just hard to even visualize. That's 38 cars a minute. You, you divide that out, that is 38 cars a minute on a Saturday coming into this place. And I'm not saying it's bad, the TIA, TIA says we can handle it. They say we can handle it with, especially with the improvements that we're making. So, and, and maybe we can. But, you know, again, there's good and bad to this, but I, I want people out there to realize that we take all these things into consideration. And yes, I have been a proponent of slow down the growth a little bit. I have, you know, especially with apartments and other things. I've just, you know, everybody up here is going to laugh about that, but that's just the way it is. But, um, you know, I don't, I'm not really concerned about nitpicking this site plan. I mean, I think essentially it is what it is. Staff's worked on this for eight months, nine months? We had five iterations of TRC. So, you know, I don't feel that real, we're really at a position here to, to nitpick over a site plan. You know, the, the bottom line, and I even had this on a sheet of paper sitting here when I sat down, you know, the council has a final decision, and they will continue to do what they want to do for the reasons they want to do it. You know, and we're not always in agreement with the city council does. I think that's very clear. I mean, case in point, we had a, a large apartment complex three months ago, four months ago come for us, we recommended denial, they approved it. So, you know, we're not always lockstep, but you got to think, we're looking at planning perspectives, we're looking, they're looking at many other factors, you know, so there is that in their defense. But we're not always lockstep in what they want to do. I look forward to seeing what the council decides to do with this, I really do. And I really hope we continue to look at smart growth in the future. And I'm not saying I'm against this. These are just general comments to help us as we move into the future. If you feel the same way or you don't, let the council members know. They're the ones that have the power and the authority. It's really the only thing, only way things are going to change if we, we really push that, hey, we need to slow down. Now I'll get off my soapbox and let other, other people talk, but those, those are my comments right now.
And we're just an advisory council. I mean, regardless of the outcome, we just are advisory council, city council. So any other questions?
I had a traffic question, especially for the eastbound lanes coming off of 40. Is there going to be a free-flow right turn on one of those, or will that be fully signalized for the right turn?
Great question, and was the subject of many meetings. There will, it will be dual right-turn lanes under signal control.
Okay.
We, we investigated and felt that it was a better option to have one of those be free-flow. That is not something that NC DOT does very frequently.
And that's a.
But either scenario works from a capacity and traffic flow standpoint.
And what's the length of that ramp? Is that the, trying to find it in here? Determine what the stacking would be for that?
The, if I remember correctly.
400 feet?
I think it is 450 feet for essentially each of those three lanes.
So that would give us five tractor-trailer trucks and 10, or how many cars would that be? Maybe eight, 10 cars? That would be able to fit on the ramp?
25 feet, 23 to 25 feet for a vehicle and space between it.
We've got a lot of trucks that come there, so they're going, yeah. So that is my concern, is, is just how that traffic's going to back up, because I know we already have some backups that blow out onto the interstate.
And, and that's something that DOT, I will tell you, that was their primary concern twofold. Their number one priority is always the interstate and not backing traffic up onto the interstate. That's why the analysis considers capacity and queuing, like I talked about before. That's where we get to the turn lane lengths. Secondarily, they don't want traffic backing up onto Trowlingwood-Hoffelds Road. That's how we got to the design that's before you today.
I have a, yeah, go ahead. I have a question in that same area of the trucks and, or trucks per se, coming off that are then going to be turning left into the Pilot, where you have all the traffic leaving to go back to the interstate is either at the new stoplight coming out of Buc-E's or the Governor Scott Parkway stoplight. Will those trucks be able to get turned? And as Judy said, they, they stack up. And there's a lot of trucks that go into that Pilot.
Yeah, we, we absolutely modeled the, the Pilot driveway as part of our analysis, those truck volumes, the queues for those trucks. So yes, that, that was a key part of, of the analysis and the recommendations.
And is this a, a concrete median that's going to come all the way up to the truck entrance to Pilot?
Yeah, that's right. It focuses the.
So when they're, when they're turning out, really, they're going to come across both lanes, kind of, if they're turning, if they're turning right to come out of their exit out of Pilot, they're really going to come across both.
Well, it's more like the truck that's coming off that ramp is going to need to be in the further right lane.
Further right lane.
To then turn left into Pilot. And if they're now in the inner right lane, and they realize that they're not in the right spot, they're going to now take over both lanes to turn into Pilot.
And then, yeah, then they're going to kind of probably need both lanes to get out of Pilot, is what I'm thinking, because it's kind of tight turnover there now without a median.
Keep in mind that the movements will be governed by the coordination of the existing signal at the ID5 ramp and a new signal. Those signals are going to create gaps for that traffic.
And I think that one area is getting widened a little bit, so that might be.
Okay.
But it's your opinion, you're fairly confident you're going to keep from stacking up on the interstate?
Yes, absolutely.
Because we're, we're finding right now, and again, this isn't directed really at you, but we heard the same thing with Tanger, and they're backed up on the interstate. It, I mean, we're, we're at our peak season, of course, and that's a, a different animal. You can't compare apples to oranges there, but we've heard it before, and we're stacked on interstate. I saw it personally myself a couple of days ago, so.
And I would, I would agree with you. We do not design for, what we used to say, we don't design for Black Friday conditions at Emal. We're, we're designing for the, the peaks during the, the typical seasons and typical days at these locations. Yep.
I hope you understand the hard questions. I mean, because we're dealing with that now.
Any other questions?
A sign question.
Go ahead.
I have a question in, and this is really a, a very small, probably not even relevant question, but of the signs that you most recently approved with the. question, but, um, of the signs that you most recently approved, um, with the circle and then underneath is the city panel sign. You have the sheet there. You've got several signs that were at, you're proposing that Meven is at 90 feet, um, height, and then you're putting the Meven city panel of 100 feet under that, where you have, um, other cities that you've done that were 70 feet, um, and only had a, a 90, um, city panel. So I mean, do we need, do we need 100? What was that, 100 foot city panel? 100 square foot, yeah.
I, I mean, I think Meven.
I don't know, is it?
I mean, I think Meven.
Meven's the same number of letters as Auburn and Athens, so I mean.
Sure, I'm, I mean, yes.
I don't.
Yeah, we can make Meven fit in 90 square feet.
Just, was just that something I observed looking at it. And I mean, I know we're probably in an area that is maybe a little bit more, as you said, your, your distance to see the, the height of the sign, um, were not as flat as maybe some of these other areas as the approach. And we do have a lot of tree coverage right in this area as well, so.
I'm sorry, I wanted to understand your question. So are you saying, are you talking about square footage of the area or height?
Um, well, I was asking the square footage on the city panel.
Okay.
Yep.
So the city panel square footage is at right at 100 square feet?
Correct.
Adds to the 300 to make the total of 400 square feet, but it does not impact the height?
Right, but so my question is, does it have to be 100? Like, could it not be 90 as it is in Auburn and Athens?
Sure.
Understood, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, it could be.
I, I would contrast that. I want Meven to be 125.
Just out of curiosity, how many people in the audience have been to Buc-E's before? Okay. Okay. How, how many, how many on the council have been to other? Yeah, I went to, I went to one a couple of months ago in Alabama and it was, it was impressive. It was, it was, it was super clean and run really well. And I have to admit, it was, it was not a peak hour. It was during the week. It was an odd time. Had plenty of tra, uh, plenty of room and parking and it flowed really well. But again, that wasn't a peak time. That was just during 10 AM one day. But it, you can see why it's a destination.
Was there anything you heard from us today that is different?
No, not at all. In fact, I would concur with all of it. And, you know, I think it's, uh, super well-run. In fact, I took quite a bit of time talking to people before I even told them why I was there. And then I would say, well, we're, we've got one possibly coming. And when we got into this conversation, it was really nice. But yeah, very well-run and it's very, it's super clean. It was interesting.
Well, I would encourage y'all to call any mayor or, um, city police department or anybody you wanna call at a, an existing Buc-E's location. And I'm, I'm pretty certain that you're gonna hear, obviously not everything is, is roses, but I would say that, that, that most, if not all, of what we say represent Buc-E's has is what Buc-E's is.
I had a.
And I only went to one, um, have only been to one Buc-E's, um, and I went to it twice while I was there, because I was on a work trip, similar as you, to, just to go in. They don't have, you're, you're going in and you're making a purchase, but you're not sitting in there and eating. Is that correct? Okay.
You're on a road trip.
Mr. Beard, can you come to the microphone?
Oh, sorry. So you can just answer my question that there was nowhere to, you're, you're, you're go to a Buc-E's, you're going in the door, making a purchase and leaving. You're not sitting and eating all the things you just told us.
We are built around a road trip. We are built around the fact that you are leaving your car and you're gonna come back to the car and everything that you bring back to the car, you're, you're going to eat in the car. It's, it's just a, a quirky thing that we do and it, and it works.
So that's good for Meven. They're gonna take their trash and drive it away.
Well, I mean, yeah, or if they leave it here, we're the, I mean, we'll pick it up because that's what we do too, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I had a quick question as far as green initiatives is, I mean, you talk about efficiency of the traffic and stuff, but as far as, um, you know, uh, any of your facilities have, uh, as far as the green initiatives, as far as like, you know, solar usage or water usage? I mean, you're gonna be using like 23,000 gallons of water a day or something like that, but just any initiatives or any of your facilities as far as being green?
We're as, we're as efficient on, on water and wastewater use as we can get. I mean, that, that's critical to us, that, that we keep those numbers as, as low as literally humanly possible. Power is the same way. We're, we're a, we're, we are not a, a LEED certified building because we don't pay for the certification, but many of the elements that we use are, are, you know, energy efficient. I mean, yeah, we are, the, the point of, of our operational philosophy is that, you know, we've got to keep things as, as cost efficient as possible.
I have a question about the water usage. Uh, he just stated also that, um, according to the technical memorandum that we have, the anticipated water usage is 23,000 gallons a day. Is that based on your other stores or is that a formula that's used in?
That is based on our, our store usage.
I think we're gonna have a lot of comments. Someone would open them up.
All right, there's, we're, yeah, and we're gonna hold public comments since we got, been here two hours. We're gonna take a 10-minute bio break and then we'll come back and we're gonna do public comments. And if you've not signed up on the sheet, please come up here. We're gonna go through the order here and we'll start the public comment section, so thank you.